It helps to turn on the mic, doesn't it?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our formal session. And to get things going, we're going to ask the Honorable Councilmember Chris to do the invocation. Chris Taylor.
Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity, this new day, for this new year, that we can come together today to move this city forward. We are a city of all faiths, so we ask for civility tonight, that you would guide us, that you would move us in a direction that is peaceful, that we can make the tough decisions that we need to. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, the word of the stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, I've been asked for a motion to approve the certification of the closed session. So moved. Okay, got a motion and a second. Michael, and then second by Rocky. All right, here we go.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've certified the closed session.
Okay, now we ask for a motion to certify the minutes of the special session of January 3, 2023, informal and formal sessions of January 3, 2023, and the formal session of July 10, 2023.
So moved.
Second. January.
I said July.
Oh, good God. I'm moving the calendar. We changed the calendar. I'm only getting January. Okay.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've approved the minutes as read.
Okay, at this point, we have a wonderful presentation here, and I'm going to ask Michael Kerschman and Sue Black also to come up. Ooh, that is cool. Yeah.
And the mascot.
Ah, there we go. I'll tell you what, this is tremendous. Please, oh, look what we have coming.
Yeah, the mascot coming. My name is Sue Black. I'm the Executive Director for the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society. And Mayor, I met you when you came and spoke. Virginia Beach hosted the conference this year. VRPS has 1,500 members across the state, and you guys put on a wonderful, wonderful event this November. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here as a member of the Academy. So let me explain what the Academy is and then what the gold medal is, very briefly. Michael told me I had to be short, so. The Academy is the Academy of American Park and Recreation Association, of which there's only 173 members across the country. So it's the highest-ranking professionals in the park and rec field, of which I am honored to be a member. So when the gold medal is awarded by the Academy, who's ever in closest proximity to one of the finalists is the one that actually presents it. So I'm honored to be here. We were truly hoping that we would win the finalist award for Virginia, and we'd be giving you the finalist plaque, but that's in the future, right? We're going to win that. So I would encourage each of you to support the department and what it brings to the community and to the state. But I will tell you, being a finalist, you're the best of the best in the country. So in Phoenix this year, there are six different categories based on population. So you have Class 1 are the largest cities, of which that's Virginia Beach, over 400,000 people. And then as the populations go down to Class 5, and then there's the State Park Systems, and then that's every other year, and then the military. I was a judge for six years, so I know what goes into the gold medal, and to make it to a finalist is huge. So on behalf of VRPS, on behalf of the Academy, Mayor, congratulations, Council, to the community, and really to your team. You know, you should all be so proud of what you do for this community. So to be one of the best in the country, here you go.
Thank you very much.
Few words, please.
Very briefly, I just wanted to acknowledge everybody that's here up with me. First of all, Deputy Director Dibler is here, Chad Morris, our Planning Administrator. We also have Walter Camp, previous Park and Rec Commissioner, as well as Hugh Tierney, our Vice Chair of the Commission, your Commission, as well as Parks and Recreation, your mascot for Parks and Recreation, and Taryn is here, the new Executive Assistant of Parks and Recreation. As Sue said, it takes a team to do this, and the gold medal is based on the last five years of your operations. It's a big award, it's the highest award we can get. This makes two years in a row we were a finalist. And to be a finalist is like being nominated for an Academy Award. It's big enough itself, but there can only be one Academy Award winner, there's only one gold medal winner. This year it went to Brac, which is Baton Rouge. I know the director there very well, they had a rough year, sure it was deserved. Although I will say this, while we were a finalist two years in a row, which is massive, we are in every way, shape, and form a gold medal-winning department. We are one of the best in the nation, hands down. Our services are top-notch. That only comes through a legacy of public support, elected official support, exceptional facilities and staff. That's the only way people win a gold medal, is through having all those. We've had that for decades here in Virginia Beach. So thank you, Sue, for coming to present the finalist plaque, and hopefully next year we bring home the gold. Thank you.
Yep. And if I could just say, what makes Virginia Beach such a livable place? We're the safest city in the country, and our Parks and Recs Department is second to none. And what that does give our residents, you know, just a sense of purpose and things to do and point of pride. It's good for people's health, and once again, you're very much a part of making Virginia Beach one of the most livable communities in this great nation of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, I would like to go ahead and read the script for the speakers. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy, that allows certain representatives of group to speak for 10 minutes, applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session at the meeting must be limited to the subject or the item that is being considered by Council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decor. Whatever views you hold and want to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker, Barbara Mesner.
Good evening. Is this the new one or the same one? Okay. You didn't say which items were pulled.
You can speak on all the items.
I asked which ones were pulled, please.
J1.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I2, J1, and J9.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay. I1 is pulled? Okay, and what else?
I2 is pulled.
Okay.
J1.
Okay.
J4 is being deferred indefinitely.
Wait, I couldn't hear what you said, and he's counting the time, this is ridiculous.
And J9.
J9. Appropriate $30,000 from Department of Criminal Justice to the 2022-2023 operating budget recruitment and retention of sworn personnel. Okay, you haven't been able to retain enough police for decades, been like 150 short. I am really tired of seeing crime everywhere I go. All these things on the agenda, your number-one priority is crime, stopping drugs, alcohol, all these problems. I don't care how many staff, I watched the informal, I don't care how many people you hire, all your staff to do all these things, you're ultimately responsible for the crime. Okay, $900,000 to the Development Authority to study sewer design for Innovation Park. You've destroyed the city. You can't drive anywhere without seeing crashes, there's new ones every day. All this money, $567 million, is the first phase, you've done nothing. You just keep taking money and studies. You don't need to study. If you need to study, you shouldn't be up there. Okay, appropriate $5,000 from Department of Criminal Justice, salary increases, you've increased salaries with COVID. You've increased salaries, I don't know how many times, Pre-Trial Services Division. And, you know, many of y'all are forgetting to abstain when you work in law enforcement Transfer almost $7 million. American Rescue, you're rescuing yourselves and not the people that need help. COVID misuse of funds, I hope to heck that this is, that a real outside person investigates, there are people looking. Let's see. Express Wash Holdings LLC trustees, Stephen Sandler. Conditional use permit. The Sandlers have been involved in everything in the city, Pleasure House Point, 31st Street Park, and even the Sandler Center, which is fancy for y'all, and we paid for five parking garages for that place. I'm just, I'm tired of the crime, and I'm tired of the way you run the city. And look at this, Dominion Six, Dominion Energy. You're in bed with these giant monopolies, and tattoo parlors all over the place, automobile repair shop. Adopt and incorporate into the comp plan the Resort Area Mobility Plan. You've wasted so much money on everything for the resort, there's an entire city, people need transportation. You're subsidizing the private hotel industry that subsidizes all of you, people need to look at VPAP, you know, Parks and Rec. Look at these ads, full-page ads all over on TV, we're advertising for the aquarium every five minutes, and you're going to talk about the elections. You know, this is totally confusing, and you're spending more money, your entire staff on this, as far as public safety, still haven't done anything for justice for the victim families.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for not interrupting, it's greatly appreciated.
Hey, Madam Vice Mayor, if you would kindly do the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances and resolutions, number one, the ordinance to repeal City Code Section 36-157 regarding identification lights in taxicabs. Number three, the ordinance to appropriate $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice's Services to the FY 2022-23 Police Department Operating Budget Regarding Recruitment and Retention for Sworn Personnel. Number three is ordinance to accept and appropriate $866,900 from the Commonwealth of Virginia to the Virginia Beach Development Authority regarding site due diligence studies sewer design and construction at Innovation Park. Number five is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $36,111 from the Virginia Department Environmental Quality to the Waste Management Enterprise and Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Funds Regarding Lender Prevention and Recycling. Number six is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $5,362 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 2022-23 Human Services Operating Budget Regarding Salary Ingreases to the Community Corrections and Pre-Trial Services Division. Number seven is the ordinance to transfer $6,781,146 within the American Rescue Plan Act grant appropriation to other projects regarding fully expend the grant award within the U.S. Treasury's established guidelines.
I open a public hearing, I'm planning.
Number two, the Nemo United Methodist Church for a street closure of approximately 21,961 square feet of former Princess Anne Road, adjustment to 2040 Nemo Church Lane, District 2. Number three, Hickman Shops LLC for a modification of proffers to a conditional change of zoning regarding revised previously approved proffered site plan and enhanced landscape buffer at 2216 General Booth Boulevard, District 5. Number four, this is going to be for a definite deferral, Bonnie's Corner Associates LLP for conditional change of zoning from B2 Community Business District to conditional B1 Mixed Use District regarding 81,150 square feet of retail and up to 322 multifamily dwelling units at 1385 Fordham Drive, District 1. And number five is Express Wash Property Holdings LLC, Les S. Kushner trustee of the Irene G. Schwartz of, excuse me, Schwartz Qualified Terminable Interest Property Marital Trust, Stephen B. Sandler, Arthur B. Sandler, State of Morton Brechnoff, and Virginia Electric and Power Company for conditional changes zoning from Ag2 Agriculture District to conditional B2 Community Business District and a conditional use permit rate car wash facility at 3503 Dam Neck Road, a portion of 66-foot Vepco right-of-way east of 3503 Dam Neck Road and the western portion of the parcel on the corner of Dam Neck Road and Monet Drive, District 2. Number six, Virginia Electric and Power Company, EVA Dominion Energy, Virginia, Punggoh Airfield LLC for conditional use permit rate public utility transformer stations and major transmission lines and towers at 1848 Princess Anne Road, District 2. Number seven is the Permanent Pictures Tattoo LLC, Dam Neck Square LLC for conditional use permit rate tattoo parlor at 1581 General Booth Boulevard, 104, District 5. Number eight is Christiana Rosia Red Mill North LLC for conditional use permit rate tattoo parlor at 2133 Upton Drive, Suite 120, District 5. Number 10, Valvoline LLC, Holland Century Associates LLP for conditional use permit rate automobile repair garage at 3949 Holland Road, District 10. And the last one is number 11, resolution to adopt and incorporate into Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016 rate Resort Area Mobility Plan 2022, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All righty. Vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, you know, first ordinance and resolution to discuss is item two, resolution to rescind the resolution adopted on December 13, 2022, directing City Manager to develop a public input process rate election system requested by Councilmember Wooten. Okay, do we have speakers?
Yes, Mayor. First speaker is Ralph Parham, and the next speaker after that will be Conrad Shesventer.
Hey, good evening, Ralph.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I cannot step aside like my hero, Bobby, one of my heroes, Bobby Kennedy, would tell me. We had one General Assembly person speak on this, we had the General Assembly to speak on this, we had two federal courts speak on this. Now it's time for the people to speak on this. So I oppose the rescind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Conrad Shesventer, followed by Seko Varner.
I speak tonight in zeal for our 10-1 district system. It's thorough and splendidly exemplifying representative democracy. We have fine council members, Schulman, Remick, Rouse, Henley, Holcomb, Taylor, and Hammond, elected justly and easily in that fashion. Much like our delegates and Congress, the district used their voice to appoint a representative, and it worked smoothly. That gives me pause for a second, as I remember the process that got us here. I remember the system we used to have, and I remember who was celebrated yesterday, Martin Luther King Jr. It was MLK's efforts that helped force the Voting Rights Act through a racist structured government. It was the Voting Rights Act which determined a district residency requirement and an at-large voting is racially suspect. That was a broken voting system, and the resulting 10 District 1 mayor system is the proper fix. 10 to 1 is not broken. Asking the public if it wants to flirt with more at-large voting is a direct affront to the type of justice MLK fought for and took embarrassingly long for our city to adopt. And I'm reminded, the Republican Party of Virginia Beach lauded MLK's impact, quoting, "It's not possible to be in favor of justice for some, but not all." They shared that yesterday. And I'm reminded of how many Republicans actually believe MLK was a Republican. That's ironic, as King was anti-capitalist, anti-imperialist, prosecuted by law enforcement, and strongly in support of labor and collective bargaining, something Virginia Beach schools and Virginia Beach's other city employees are interested in. On this charge tonight, I say don't use Dr. King as a token and follow his actual beliefs. Preserve the Voting Rights Act in Virginia Beach, rescind the call to open up talks on Virginia Beach's voting system.
Next speaker is Seko Varner, after that will be Barbara Mesner.
Seko, good evening.
Peace and blessings to you all, peace and blessings to us all. I want to take your time and thank three of the members for responding to one of my emails earlier. So I sent an email in December saying that I didn't think that we should move away from a system that we just developed. And I got three responses, so I want to thank, you know, Rosemary Wilson, Sabrina Wooten, and Rocky Holcomb for responding. And I really, really appreciate the information you provided, Rosemary. She gave me some really great information with her response. And on its face, I thought seeking the citizen's view was a beautiful thing to do. Then it occurred to me that there've been some times when the citizens weren't sought, the citizens' view, their opinion, their concerns was not sought. You know, when we spent $1.5 million to try to change what we have, that wasn't sought. And it just appears really interesting that now we're saying, hey, we have something that we really know likes, or maybe we should seek the citizen's view. It just doesn't feel right. And it actually kind of saddens me. So while I normally would heavily support seeking the citizen's view, to try to do it now just seems very suspect. And I don't think it's in the best interest of our city. Thank you for what you do, thank you for what you will do, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Seko. Thanks for coming.
Barbara Mesner, after Barbara Mesner, it'll be Gary McCollum.
You know, I attended the June 15 meeting at Economic Development, and then came to some of your meetings. The meetings, you can, you were talking today, I watched a few minutes, about 12 forums. It's too late, you didn't ask us before, you didn't have the forums before. You have so many staff, the city attorney, communications, you have the entire legal staff on top of outside law firms that you're paying. Everyone up here who's affected, and especially the ones who are running, again, you can't, you shouldn't be discussing this voting or using air money. Unless it comes out of your pocket, which it doesn't, it comes out of the air pockets, air debt. I didn't bring up the other thing, because I thought there was another thing pulled But, you know, you let other people talk about who responds and who doesn't. Ms. Wilson is appointed, she's my rep now.
Please stick to the...
Okay, then interrupt everybody fairly. What are you so afraid of? You have a conflict, you all have a conflict, and it's not your job, you know, to hire somebody, and then you're talking about going to the General Assembly. You're all in the same parties, you pretend there's different parties, it's all the same money. Just go to VPAP and see who pays for these election, who buys the elections. And one of the speakers, ironically, he filed to run to split votes one year, 2019, right around the time, if not the day, of the mass shooting, you know. The way this city is run and the staff, like I signed up for consent agenda, but it wasn't confirmed. I had to go online and email again to be able to speak. Does anybody have any questions or anything to say? Thank you, I didn't think so.
Next speaker is Gary McCollum, and after Gary McCollum will be Julius Hoggard.
Good evening. Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to the newly-elected council people. I listened to the earlier session today about this topic. I am in favor of the resolution, but for by Councilman Wooten. And, you know, being a minister, I'm reminded of the Apostle Paul, who told the church at Philippi, "Don't be anxious about anything, but in prayer and supplication make your request known unto God." And what I sense... And what I sense is that we're in a hurry. My father-in-law would say it like this, "Show me somebody in a hurry, and I'll show you somebody coming from trouble or heading toward trouble." And what I see is this compressed input process, which, according to the session you had earlier, which is going to lead to an August 18 decision as to whether or not there's going to be a referendum. And I, if we truly want input on a system that we just used one time in November, and now in a matter of weeks, we've made a decision, and we're going to go out and see if we can change it. Well, I think what my brother Seko was talking about, something doesn't smell right with that. Is it because those of you who are going to face voters in 2024 don't want to face voters in a 10-1 system? Could that be why we're trying to rush the judgment on getting input? I don't know. But something just doesn't seem right about the pace of this, if we truly want to get input. Let's take our time. Let's really get input. Let's make sure that we're going to all parts of the city. I heard a comment today that we were going to have 12 sessions, but we have 10 districts. So where are the other two sessions going to be? Someplace where working folks can't get to at a time when they're working? Something just doesn't smell right with this. And so I'm all for getting input, but I'm also about getting it right. And I think that's what I'm asking you to do. I applaud Councilman Wooten for bringing this issue to your attention, because if she hadn't, this would just have happened. And I think we can do better than that. I think we owe it to our citizens to do it in the way that they're going to really give input and let them know all of the issues behind this. How much is this going to cost us? And if we're spending money on this, what are we not spending money on? That's what we elected you to do. So I thank you for each one of you, what you do for our great city, and I am, again, in favor of this resolution by Councilman Wooten, that we rescind this thing. And if we are going to do something, do it with a pace that's going to work, where you truly get the input of the citizens. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Julius Hoggard. After that will be Carl Wright.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Shalom to y'all. Just to give you a little background, I'm an outsider from here. I've been in Virginia for about over 10 years now, after I graduated college from undergrad. I also have received my masters in Virginia Beach, and I actually worked for the city of Norfolk and city of Virginia Beach as well, over the years. So I just want to know, I just want to say that, as an outsider, I feel like, when I worked for the city of Virginia Beach, I seen a lot of things that could benefit people that's coming and migrating towards Virginia Beach. I'm from North Carolina, like, I'm a small-town country boy. We don't, where I'm from, it's only one or two stoplights out of my town, and you, out of my town. We don't even have Walmart where I'm from. So I believe in Virginia Beach as my home, and I want to keep it that way. But I want to say, I think that, thank you for, Mr. Garrett, for inviting me to this city council meeting. And I want to just see, like, four questions that I want to get off my chest concerning the 10-1 system. The 10-1 system produced the most diverse council the cities in cities history. What's wrong with that? Number two, why are we getting input from citizens before you know legally what can be done? Number three, why are you insinuating that the 10-1 system is flawed when we only have one election? Number four, any change to the current 10-1 system will surely invite another lawsuit forcing the city again to pay millions of taxpayers' dollars in legal bills. And if you can't understand what I said, please raise your hand. I'm a country boy, so my accent is kind of like off the chain, so. All right, thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thanks for coming. Really appreciate it. Come back.
The next speaker is Carl Wright, and the last speaker I have is Perez Gatling.
Good evening, Carl.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. The young man from the country, he had some of my questions as well. Vice Mayor, Ms. Rosemary Wilson, and Ms. Barbara Henley, and some of you all has been up here for some time. He asked some good questions. The system produced the most diverse, Ms. Henley, the most diverse Ms. Henley, a group of people that I've seen since I've been in Virginia Beach. I want to know what's wrong with that. I can tell you for sure, because I'm grassroots, boots on the ground, that two of you, if it wasn't for this system, wouldn't be up there. I can guarantee that. I want to say to you that keep going over this same thing and doing it over and over again, Ms. Henley, is wrong. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, it's costing us millions of dollars. The state has spoken, the feds have spoken, but now you want to keep pushing back. We're not going back to the systems, man. Folks have taken enough. You know, the thing that gets me the most about it is that when we had that hybrid system, and we were laughing, and we were friends, I never heard one of you talk about taking it to the citizenry to look at the system, ever. With all the conversations that we had, I never heard one of you come and say, you know what, let's take it to the citizenry and talk about our system. And we came to you a many times, talking about how unfair, how unjust, about the future of our children and grandchildren. You never brought that up. So now, all of a sudden, we want to have input. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm for input. I'm for inclusion, equality, and justice for all. But I know when you're playing games and you're trying to slick a can of grease, it doesn't make any sense. So what you're looking for is continued division among the people. You need to be held accountable for those folks in your district. When you make votes, that's what I'm doing now. All the conversation is over, I follow your votes. Where they say, follow the money and follow the votes, that's it. We don't need to continue to go back and forth, Mr. Mayor, millions of dollars. I've never heard you come to any community and talk about inclusiveness when it's discussing, when it was discussing those, the Alpass system, which was a hybrid system, one of the worst of the worst, particularly for minority groups, Ms. Henley. And I think some of you, you are really nice people, but you make bad choices and you have bad influences. And the next generation of folk that's coming behind us, they're not going to deal with that. I like what the young man said, he asked very valuable questions to be outside of the city, so let's not.
Thank you very much, Carl. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next speaker is Perez Gatling, and then Mayor, I'm sorry, we have one more speaker,
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Perez Gatling, and I pastor Ebenezer Baptist Church in Virginia Beach, Virginia. And I did get responses to my email to council regarding this. And as I said during the meeting earlier this year, we kind of see the writing on the wall. This is the beginning of a return to disenfranchising various segments of the city's population. Our new election system has provided citizens direct representation and allowed candidates to campaign without the cost of running expensive citywide campaigns. In this, in this last city council election, my church community, Western Bayside, had the opportunity to vote for the person who will represent our interests and the interests of the people she sees day in and day out. Why would you take that away? Why would you remove that from our citizens, and not just the citizens of Western Bayside, but citizens in each area of the city? I know there are things that you come together and vote on citywide, but we know that Dr. Ross Hammond is accountable to us in Western Bayside. I don't believe that changing the system is in the best interest of the city, and I request that you vote to rescind the December 13 resolution during your January 3, 2023 meeting. Even if the request is not rescinded on January 3, we will continue to advocate for what is right. We won't get tired. We will not lose focus. We will not lose focus on doing the right thing for all the citizens of the city, and we ask that you do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Last speaker is Georgia Allen.
Hey, good evening, Georgia.
Good evening. It's always such a pleasure to come down here and speak to my city council members. And most of you know me, I have been in the fight for over 30-plus years, fighting to try to have fairness in the city of Virginia Beach, and it has not been easy. Years ago, we had to change the city council elections to November, because we were having such a low turnout. It made it very difficult for people to be able to get off two and three times a year for an election, because it was primaries. Then there was the city council, and then in November, there was a general election. And I'm here to say that I am in favor of orders, Resolution Number Two, to rescind the Resolution to Adopt December 13, directing the city manager to develop a public input process reelection system. I'm here to support Sabrina Wooten, okay, because I believe that what she's trying to do is in the best interest of our citizens. I looked at the return of the elections for this time around, and one of our candidates spent $110,000 to run in a district race. So can you imagine how much it would have cost her to run citywide? That was $18.51 per vote. Well, we had another person who ran in the district, and she spent $20,000 for her race, and you know what? It only cost $3.33 per vote. Now, if I'd been sitting on city council for 40 years, shouldn't everybody in my district know me? Shouldn't they all know me? Is there any reason why I should have to spend that much money? Shouldn't be. I had Mr. Holcomb to come to me and say that his constituents are saying that they want everybody to get 50% of the vote. Well, guess what? Ms. Jennifer Rouse got 54% of the vote. Amelia Ross Hammond got 95.9% of the vote. The rest of the council got less, and yours didn't pop up on VPAP, so you got 50-something. But the rest of the council members got 30-some percent of the vote, 30-something and 40-some percent of the vote. So it's just very, very disturbing that you want people to spend $100,000 to sit on city council. It's unconscionable. I support.
Thank you, Georgia. Appreciate it.
I support her resolution. We don't need any more input. We have enough. The voting told us that.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we have one more speaker, Steph Sturr.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. And congratulations to everyone who won their races, too. Hi, I'm Steph Sterner. I actually live in the 9th district, and I want to speak to two agenda items. Currently, we're on number two, and I'm asking everyone to go ahead and take Councilmember Sabrina Wooten's suggestion, and we go ahead and rescind the resolution that was adopted in December 13. I mean, I'm for equitable voting, you know, everyone should have their chance to, we shouldn't dilute anyone's votes. I grew up in this city, my dad was a chief in the Navy, I don't know. I'm really just kind of demoralized to seeing certain things with the city. So y'all know my answer on that, you know, equality. And I want to speak to number five. I had to slip this in because it's tangentially related. I am a poor person, I'm fighting to stay in my apartment. Three times last year, I was faced with eviction. I basically had to rob Peter at a pay-pall to cover my bills, cover my electricity, a lot of things. I see other people, too. I mean, my apartment complex, we found a dead mouse. This is the same apartment, probably got some of those PPP loans. 90% in Hampton Roads, the PPP loans went to, like, big box stores, scum lords, I mean landlords. And basically, I am being processed at a city that I used to love. I grew up here. I had big dreams and hopes. And a lot of people experience that. A lot of people are unhoused right now. You know, December 24, me as a poor person, I and a group of friends, we decided we were going to put together an expedited poverty and homelessness committee, because we feel like there's not much being done. I've been to the housing resource center over the summer to ask when the, when the rent relief programs run out, the little funding, just so I can float, you know, so I could just survive, so I could find something better. And I do a lot of good work, but that shouldn't be the issue here. Do you know, like, nine out of 10 workers, one worker in the state of Virginia who works for the city, they cannot, they can live here, but the other nine can't. You got workers commuting here, and all they got was $15 an hour. That should have been in 2011. I'm sorry I'm yelling. I'm upset. And I'm transitioning, okay? But it's hard for everyone. One of my unhoused friends, Terry, he's a veteran, and he is located on Independence and Broad Street. He's back there again. Someone picked him up, he said that he was transferred over to.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming and giving comments.
Dedicated funding for rent relief, keep people in their homes.
Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. At this point, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Wooten.
Certainly, I wanted to say I appreciate the comments the young lady just made. Certainly want to really look into more that we can do to assist people. I do want to make a motion to approve this ordinance or resolution, and then I have some comments.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Ms. Wooten?
So I have some comments that I would like to make. I'm going to veer off a little bit from them, I'm not going to make as many. But one of the things I do want to say is, the reason this resolution was brought forth was for the community, for those who reached out, for those who came to the December 13 meeting and just saw that something wasn't right with that approval for that resolution to do community input. And so they spoke out and they said, listen, we want to rescind that. The community said they wanted to rescind that December 13 resolution. And so it's really interesting to me, you know, really wanted to bring the resolution January 3. However, we waited until tonight. And it's funny that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday was yesterday. And so I thought about that for a good while, and I thought about it because every year we celebrate his birthday. We see folks marching in the streets, vigilant about this great civil rights leader, and rightly so. Because in 2023, we are still talking about fair voters' rights in Virginia Beach. That's why we have to continue to stay vigilant. Because on its face, what we saw was a resolution December 13 that said citizens' input. On its face, it's a good thing, right? Absolutely, it's always good to hear citizens' input. But what we're also seeing is a path that's being set.
But what we're also seeing is a path that's being set. Citizens' input move forward to a referendum, change the system. That's the path that's being addressed and open, initiated with this whole resolution from December 13th. And so I'm just gonna go over a little bit, some of the facts that are really important here. How did this start? Well, in the very beginning, back last year, I found out that some folks were calling certain council members, mostly those who were Republicans, not Democrats, trying to get a referendum going to change the electoral system. Well, it came out. Councilmember Rouse, who's now senator, won his election. He held a town hall and brought that situation to light. Then that process stopped. So what you see now is a redirect to do the same thing. That's why we have to bring this to the public, to the open. We're talking about a situation, a strategy that was started, but because it was exposed, it was redirected. So it was redirected to this resolution December 13th. And we found out today, the feedback for this citizens' input is going to be used to develop a referendum to change the system. Now, how much is that gonna cost the taxpayers? Between $180,000 to $300,000. How much did we spend fighting and repealing that system that we had in place? Over $2.9 million without your approval. I asked many folks in my district. They were very upset, black, white, young, old. They asked, why would we spend so much money to appeal that system? And so those are the numbers, folks. So if we go down this road, this whole resolution doesn't pass, we're looking at between $180,000 and $300,000 from the taxpayers. Then we are gonna go down the trajectory of a referendum that's most likely not gonna be a 10-1 system that, as you heard, elected the most diverse city council ever in 60 Happy birthday, by the way, Virginia Beach. This is our 60th year anniversary as a city. You know how many council members of color we've had in that process? Because it's important because Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. fought for the Voting Rights Act of 1965 to prohibit discrimination for racial groups from voting. This is important. Six. We've had six in about 60 years. But we gained two more in November 2022. What's wrong with that system, folks? Six in 60 years? The problem is, and what I've been listening to residents say, is the current system, the 10-1 system, gave them an opportunity to vote for someone of choice. Why is that important? Well, it's important because in the previous system we had with only six people of color to serve in 60 years on our council, if you've never had a chance, or very rarely had a chance, to select someone of choice, your concerns don't get addressed. You don't have proper representation. Now, some people say, well, what's the big idea? That's a big deal. You must have representation. That's important. So that's why we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., one of many things, one of many reasons. And so, you know, before, you know, I hear from my other colleagues, because one of the other reasons why it was important to bring this forward was because those who were elected by the new system didn't get a chance to vote on that December 13th resolution. We didn't hear from them, but they're here tonight, and I hope we hear from them, all of them. So again, we're celebrating 60 years since the time that the first electoral system we've had that was deemed illegal and that was deemed it violated the Voting Rights Act. Since that time, we have had minorities grow in our city. So since the first system that we had back in the 1960s, you, I'm sure, know that minorities, African-Americans, those groups have grown. And the census data I have is a bit dated, but what I have is, today, we have about 31%. And so with 31% of minorities, African-Americans, there should be more than six, and today, eight, folks who are representing them in the city in 2023. That's why the 10-1 system is important. Now, I understand city council has to do something, and you will hear folks say there's nothing wrong with getting input, and it's not. As long as you're not using the taxpayers' money, changing the system back to, or not saying back, but to a similar system. Because please understand, the 10-1 system that is, has provided for inclusivity, whatever system we go to, will probably not be or yield the results of a 10-1 system. But the kicker is, you're paying the bill for it. I just think you should know that. I think that's important. So the only other thing that I'll say at this point is, again, this is 60 years we're celebrating. What I'm hearing from the citizens is, we don't want to continue to spend money, because that's the other part. If we change to another system, other than the 10-1 system, it's going to be challenged in court. So there's another bill you're going to have to pay, along with $180,000 to $300,000 for the citizens' input. And so folks are saying, well, we want to be fiscally responsible. We want to spend the taxpayers' dollars. Well, wait a minute. Does that not apply here, too? It should. It's a lot of money. We've already spent $2.9 million. Okay?
Folks, please.
It's a lot of money. So I just want to make sure, you know, get that information, get the facts out. What we really need to do at this point now, since the 10-1 system that we have, we need to have that system approved. Because what we have right now isn't sufficient to go forward in the future. There needs to be a resolution brought forth to say we want the 10-1 system, if that's what the people want, and then go to the General Assembly and to make sure that that's approved going forward. So if this is the system the people want, those should be the next steps. And we've had several, at least four or five other community input sessions. They didn't cost $300,000, though. But what I remember is some of the same feedback from the people. 10-1 system, a system that's going to, you know, help them elect someone of choice. And so I digress and certainly ask my other colleagues to share their opinions as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm in support of Councilwoman Wooton's resolution to rescind. And I think if you watched the informal session, you would have noted from our conversation in session, and then my conversations with my colleagues just more casually, that there is great support for public input, for public engagement, for public education on the voting system. So that's not the issue here. The issue that I have, and I tried to figure out, you know, in the time that we had, is there a middle ground? Is there a compromise? Is there something where we can pair public engagement but not to a referendum? Because what I'm not comfortable with is this timeline. Because what we're asking is, from February to June, to collect data, to then decide to put forward to a referendum potentially, a decision where constituents wouldn't have lived and existed and felt represented for even one full year in this new system. It doesn't, the math ain't mathin' for me. And so for that reason, this is to, I know we need to make a decision. That has been made clear to us that as a body, we do have to direct the General Assembly on how to move forward. But for me, I still have unanswered questions about the timeline. So for that reason, I'm not going to vote for anything that puts us on a timeline until I have more answers to those questions. And there's a process that, for me, the researcher in me that satisfactorily collects data and that that data is representative, because I don't want to lose sight of the reason we went to this system, which was to create a more representative government. So the data needs to be just as representative, and in this timeline, I'm not comfortable that that's going to happen. So I'll be voting in support of Councilwoman Wooton's resolution to rescind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we're gonna be ready for the vote here. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Josh, I didn't, sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, and then Amelia?
Yeah.
And then Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And since I'm new here and, you know, glad to be here, I thought it was incumbent upon me to share some of my reasoning behind, you know, how I feel about this issue. And I recognize it's an issue that people feel passionate about. I was here on December 13th in that audience, and it's hard, and it was hard not to be moved by the testimony that I heard that day and that we all heard today, especially from our friends and neighbors in the African-American community with regard to their experiences and their perspective. And I thank Councilwoman Wooton because I understand that part of the reason we're talking about this today is because the folks who did not have a chance to voice their opinion and who are elected, now I guess we have an opportunity to do just that. And it's fair to say, I think, that people have reasonable differences of opinion with regard to our current system of elections. I encountered people at the polls during the campaign that supported our current system, those people that did not like our current system, and those people who frankly were confused and didn't even know that there was a change or why. Let me just say, I am proud to represent the citizens of District 9. I worked very hard to be able to do that. And my colleagues who recently ran in elections, I know, did the same. I feel accountable as a district representative to District 9 residents in a way that perhaps an at-large seat would not afford. There are those of us who've been following this issue very closely, and there's a tendency to talk around numbers like 7.3 and 10.1 and what have you. And what we're missing is that the general public really hasn't had an opportunity to fully understand what the changes are. In addition to a new voting system that resulted in a 10-1 system, we had 20,000 people voting in new locations. We had lines that were drawn that split neighborhoods. Like in my district, which stuck point, they drew a line straight down the middle of the street. In Aragona, where people on one side of the street were voting for one person, and then people who lived on the other side of the street were voting for other people. All those things should be on the table for discussion and education. We all want an election system that is fair and just. And we have much to celebrate with this being the youngest and most diverse city council in Virginia Beach history. And I'm looking very much forward to working alongside my colleagues. What we're being asked today is not whether we want to change the system or whether to put a ballot question to the public. We're being asked whether or not to include the public in the conversation, not only for their input, but also for our collective education as a community, what our options truly are. I think we may be surprised to find that we may have fewer or even different options than we realize, including the option to stick with what we've got. There's no more fundamental right in a democracy than the right to vote. And that decision doesn't belong to the council, it belongs to the people. The people have not had a chance to digest, let alone have any input as to any of this. And that is why I'm in favor of not just public input, but public education and engagement around this topic, because it's a two-way street. And since we aren't obligating ourselves tonight to any particular outcome, that would be a completely separate conversation at a separate time. I think it's incumbent upon us to bring the public into this conversation. We may find people like our new system. We may also find that there are alternatives we hadn't previously considered. And if you watch the informal session today, I like the process being proposed and that it'll be led by a nationally renowned public policy institute. So for that reason, I'm gonna go ahead and support our continued engagement with the public around this issue.
Thank you. Amelia, and then Chris.
Good evening to everyone. I was one of the people, as you're listening, when I ran for city council the first time and fairly new in the process, suddenly the newspaper put out, "We haven't had an African-American on city council in 15 years." I was the third. And I know the process of going around the entire city, and it was costly. But I was blessed that coming up here, I met a lot of colleagues who got along very well. What's going on right now, as you heard, that education is important. Education is key. Knowledge is power. And the whole process we're going through, I was here with Josh, sitting out there, when this was proposed. And he looked at me, and I looked at him, and was like, well, we didn't have any say because we're not in the seats yet. So all in all, having some input, having the education like we had in the informal session, really was helpful because then we could see there is a need to hear everybody. And there's no need, as I look at it right now. We've only been in there since, what, November we've gotten the election? This is our second month? And maybe we should see all of this through, but at the same time, get education, get the public to hear what is the story behind that. So this way, we're not saying right now, more defer for a little bit until we see how it runs out. I heard that part of the reason is, we're looking at August because having worked from trying to get something through the General Assembly, there's only a small window of time to get that written up and sent in. But if we want to see how well it works out, we may have to wait a little bit and then revisit this conversation. One of the things that was very helpful from the Department of Communication was they made every effort, you may have heard me say inclusive, to let everyone know in as many languages what was happening. And that made a difference for people. And that made a difference for people coming out for the system that we are now in. And for me, I quickly learned the size of my district and was able to navigate, get to know so many people, and look at a plan for us moving forward, at the same time, reading about the other districts, because we have to vote as a group, as majority. So this brought to us today, in a manner in which Sabrina brought this up, for me, her point is not so much that we should not do this, but we need to know more. And I think just making a decision right tonight doesn't give us that time to learn, to understand, to try on these new pair of shoes for a little bit and see where it takes us. Thank you.
Chris?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Guest. We celebrated MLK's birthday two days ago, and I posted a quote, and it said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy from his strength to love in 1963." And we have a lot of challenges, and this is a very controversial issue. It's not a Republican or Democratic issue. The catalyst might have been race, Ms. Allen. But it's not a black or white issue. I'm looking at the Honorable Brad Martin, who in 2018 won District Eight, the precincts, from Louis Jones. But the at-large outside votes caused him to lose that race. Brad Martin is not African-American. I don't know if he's a Republican or Democrat. We were elected to make tough decisions. District Eight produced the most number of votes in this recent election. Fact. Fifty-eight percent of District Eight came out to vote. Fact. District Eight is the least diverse district in the city. Fact. I was outraised two to one. Fact. Outspent two to one. Fact. Minister McCullough promised me he was going to recruit someone to run against me. My challenge is that the previous council was advised in the November 27th edition of the Princess Anne Examiner, and I read, quote, from Judge Jackson. He says, "But the time for the suit is after, not before, the plan is adopted," the city argued. Jackson, in siding with the plaintiffs, noted that the court still has jurisdiction over the matters in the case, and the city council, quote, "will decide on which election system to pursue for the November 2024 elections," end quote. Jackson then wrote, "It would be a waste of judicial resources to hold any proceedings ahead of the new council's determination," or dismiss the case before the new council's determination. Then we got feedback from Attorney Stiles's office. I'm quoting Deputy City Attorney Chris Boynton. "There's no active case at this moment," Deputy City Attorney Chris Boynton said during a telephone interview on Tuesday, November 22nd. "But it's still technically pending in the U.S. District Court," end quote. Boynton said a next step would be for the city council, presumably, he noted, the incoming council, to gather for a briefing on where things are and start any process of making decisions about how to proceed. That did not happen. When we talk about public education, I was surprised today, although the presentation from communications was thorough, when it got time to discuss the public input, the first option that we would discuss was seven-three. One. And my question was, do we plan on educating the public on the ten-one system? Because in District Eight, the majority of voters that make up the majority of voters that showed up don't have an issue. And so tonight, I'm going to make the hard decision to support Councilwoman Wooton on the principle. We were advised, the previous council was advised twice by Judge Jackson and by our internal city attorney, that this issue should go before the new council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Worth?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, fellow citizens. I've been watching this for almost six years now, evolved to where we are today, tonight. It's not an easy question to answer. We've got the General Assembly that's spoken, we've had the federal courts speak, we've had our city council members speak, we've had actually a lot of input from the public citizenry. But this council up here tonight is the most diverse the city has ever had, and that is a result of the ten-one system that I support. For, there are a lot of reasons to support the ten-one system. There are a lot of good reasons to support the other ways as well. But we do need public input, and we've had public input. So the four things that I would talk about are the results, which I just said, the money that's involved, as Sabrina, as Councilwoman Wooton said, three hundred thousand dollars to do this public input this year. We've already spent millions to date, and potentially, if we get sued again, there's more millions of dollars of our taxpayer dollars being spent on legal cases, on legal fees. So it's a matter of law as well. If we do anything other than the ten-one system, we can be challenged also by the General Assembly bill, I think trumps all of this that we're talking about. So we can have a lot of public input, there's a lot at stake. Also, the timing issue that we've heard about tonight. By January 1 of 2024, we need to have a new system in place. And I'm sure that it's a lot of time until then, at the same time, there's not, because you have to have the General Assembly ready by 2024. So I also support this resolution tonight.
Anyone else? Okay. One of, yeah, Sabrina.
I just want to correct just one thing. Like I said, I was veering off a bit from my notes. I want to correct the amount that was spent on fighting the previous case and appeal. It was two million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-five thousand. So just wanted to make that correction.
Okay. Thank you. You know, let me put it this way. You know, we got a great council up here. We have diversity. We have collegiality. We're going to be working together. We're not always going to come to consensus, but let's, whatever deliberations we have, have the civil discussions, let's figure out what we have in common, not what divides us. And these things are going to pop up from time to time. But the thing is, we're going to talk about it, we're going to discuss it. And one of the areas that we are, we've, discussion, and then we're definitely going to be talking about at the upcoming retreat, is improving and enhancing public engagement, not only in this issue, but in all issues that come in front of us. You know, we heard that, you know, at the meeting, you know, a group of community members on a controversial project in the district said, "We need more public engagement with the city council." So when I say, "I talk about," the intent is not to change the system, is to improve and enhance the system, if possible. It's, once again, with all the deliberations, and we have been involved, and one of the reasons, you know, we had the vote with the previous council, but we understood that the new council was coming in. We've been, you know, working with this, with the court case for six years, and, you know, a lot of folks were intimate in details, and it was certainly not to shun the input from the new council, because we knew going forward, we were going to have to do things. And I think it's incumbent on us as, you know, council members, that we continually strive to achieve the process to a degree where so many people are really in, you know, cohesion with what we're trying to do. And, you know, a lot of the folks were left out. And over the years, we made attempts to have public input, a couple of years ago, but then the COVID came up and we had to table it. And, you know, once again, we were considering the possibility of a referendum last time, but when the, when the decision came down, we just did not have the window of opportunity. We could not have informed the public, educated the public, and got the input. So we had some barriers to that. But we're looking here, and I want to give assurances, that one of, perhaps one of the objectives is to come up with a referendum question. But that remains to be seen, my friends, because once again, it comes up to us to make the decision. And even if there was a referendum and a vote, it's an advisory, you know, situation. But once again, I think as we look forward to embrace as a community, and I'll tell you what, if you look at the election systems, you know, throughout, you know, the nation, you know, it is a source of great controversy. But once again, all we are trying to do, the intent, is to solicit input, because one way or the other, we're going to have to go to the General Assembly to get a charter change. You know, that's going to happen, because we found out in the presentation today that our current system has not been, you know, certified or corrected, it's not in place what we need. But, you know, since we have to deal with the General Assembly, and since we have to do other things, are there perhaps avenues that, you know, that even both sides of the issue? And I agree with the, with the notion of trying to find a compromise. And by doing that, by getting to the people, you'd be surprised, we learn a lot by talking to the people. And if we go ahead and use this group out of the University of Virginia, and the reason, is it costing them some money? Yes. But the thing is, it is objective, it is nonpartisan, it doesn't have the emotion and passion. What it does, is bring a sense of, okay, this is what's out there, this is the reality. And the other thing is to, the notion, be assured that the current ten-one system, as it was in the presentation today, is going to be part of the dialogue that we're going to have. Now, are there options? Yes. Are they limited? Yes. But the point is, if we can find a path to compromise, and, but once again, start this new era with a new council of bringing our public to the table, you know, I really think that would be the direction we should go. So at this point, yeah, Mark.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify one statement that I made in the, in the open session regarding referendums. There are two different types of referendum questions that may be asked. The type that I was discussing when I answered the question in the informal was the advisory referendum under the Virginia Beach City Charter. If the council proposes a resolution under the city charter, the vote on that is a recommendation from the public only, and the council need not follow it. There is a separate process for a referendum under the state code as it relates to a charter change. And if it, if the referendum is presented under that code section, and the public votes for the charter change, then that change must be presented. But in the presentation that staff was making to you today, we were contemplating the advisory referendum, not the mandatory referendum under the state code. So I didn't want someone to feel misled by my earlier answer, so I wanted to publicly explain the difference between the two provisions.
And, you know, I think this brings up a point that, you know, once again, the first, all the public input and education would release, would result in a discussion point about the potential impossibility of having an advisory referendum moving forward. But that also leaves us time and latitude to go into it in far more depth and, you know, seek the objectives of what we're trying to do. So with that said, if we can open the vote.
So why don't you tell?
Okay. A yes vote is to, a yay vote is to rescind the action from last December.
And a no vote is not.
And it is to not. Yep.
By a vote of...
Mr. Mayor, you have a question for Mr. Remick?
Yes.
So a yes vote is to support...
The, you know, the rescinding of it.
I support Councilman, Councilmember Wooton's resolution. I say yes to that.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, by a vote of five to six, the resolution has failed.
Okay. Thank you all very much, and thank you for civil and robust discussion, and be assured, we will be proceeding with the, the public's best interest in mind. Okay. Now we go over to planning and J1. The Atlantic Development Associates LLC and WPL Ventures LLC, for a variance, the section of the subdivision regulations, raise, subdivide two lots into 11170 Third Street, District Six, formerly Lynn Haven, and that was deferred from December 6.
Mayor, we have one, I'm sorry, we have four speakers. First speaker is Eddie Burdon.
Hi, Eddie. How are you doing?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, honorable council members. For the record, I am Eddie Burdon, a Virginia Beach attorney representing WPL Ventures, the owners of a 30-foot by 150-foot legally non-conforming 4,500-square-foot lot on the north side of 73rd Street in the 100 block, that is zoned R5R and can be legally developed with a duplex. And I am also representing Atlantic Development Associates, the owners of a 50-by-150-foot legally non-conforming 7,500-square-foot lot adjoining the east side of the WPL Ventures lot, also zoned R5R, that can be legally developed, like the majority of the lots at the north end are developed with a duplex. What my clients are requesting is essentially a boundary line adjustment between their two existing non-conforming duplex lots for the purpose of downzoning them to more conforming single-family lots upon which two homes, each a single-family home, will be built. If these variances are approved as recommended and as conditioned, each home will comply 100% with every dimensional requirement imposed in the R5IR zoning district for a single-family home. All setbacks, all height limits, floor areas, impervious surface, et cetera, no variances. Most importantly, the two single-family homes will be consistent with the single-family character of the 100 block of 73rd Street. And this effective downzoning request has been consistently and enthusiastically supported by the homeowners on this block. Today, the Atlantic Development Associates lot is 75% of the required lot size and only 62 and a half percent of the required lot width for a duplex lot under the current zoning. With this request, the resulting single-family lot will be 80% of the required single-family lot width of 50-foot and 120% of the required 5,000-square-foot lot size at 6,000 square feet. Today, the WPL Ventures lot is only 3/8 of the required lot width and 45% of the required lot size. With this variance request, the resulting lot will be, again, 40 feet in width versus 50, 80% of the required lot width, and more importantly, 120%, 6,000 square feet versus the required 5,000 square feet for a single-family lot. As proposed and conditioned, the two new homes are two and a half stories, and with the exception of a front-loading two-car garage, they comply with the architectural standards council adopted in the north-end overlay district. And as I previously stated, no zoning variances are necessary, because these two single-family homes have been designed to fit on the lot and meet all the dimensional requirements of each lot. This is a simple proposed boundary line adjustment, a shift in the boundary between the two existing lots. It is not the... It is not the, it is not the creation of two lots from one parcel of land. In fact, it will reduce the density of a potential development of the two existing parcels by two homes. This is a resubdivision, as I've said, of two legally existing non-conforming duplex lots to create two identical, less non-conforming lots restricted to developing as conditioned with a single-family home on each lot. You have received letters of support from a number of the 73rd Street residents, and at least one resident is here tonight to express the unified support of the entire block for these requests. These requests meet the standards set forth in both Section 9.3 of the subdivision ordinance and in Section 4.4B of the subdivision ordinance. Your planning staff and your planning commission unanimously have recommended your approval, and we respectfully ask that you adopt those recommendations, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Vice Mayor, the next speaker is Martin Warrant. He's representing the North Virginia Beach Civic League.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Martin Warrant. I live at 11166 Street and have for the last 30-plus years. The North End Virginia Beach Civic League, about 25 years ago, established a zoning review committee, which I had been a member for that, since that time. Because if, I don't know how many of you remember, but at one point, the north end was becoming duplex city with big block, big block buildings. And we attempted to delay that, delay that, change that. And in the last 25 years, we have had a great deal of success, and that brings me here to you this evening, because I am here this evening to oppose this request to create two new, or for that matter, any substandard building lots. Zoning requires a 50-foot wide lot. This build, this particular piece of land exceeds 50 feet. They've already said they've got 50, plus they got 30, so they've got more than 50 feet, no problems. Furthermore, they have a clear lot. I understand it's torn, the big old building down, so now there's no restrictions whatsoever. They can build two houses on this lot. Recently, the North End Civic League, under the guidance of Billy Almond, some of you may know him, the man has put his heart and soul into helping the north end, and I think Virginia Beach, established the two cottage arrangement for houses at the beach, which eliminated a lot of the need for the big boxes, and we did away with a lot of big boxes, a lot of nice little two-and-a-half-story buildings now at the north end. They're very attractive, and two of those could be built on this land, so there's no problem with them building. The lot under consideration is cleared and meets all zoning regulations and requirements. There's no, no restrictions. We began to meet with and determine how to avoid this kind of a problem many years ago, and we've been unsuccessful with this particular individual. They want what they want, which is nothing new to me. My experience is, everybody wants what they want. And I've got, I had kids that way. They are asking you to override the rules and regulations, the standards for Virginia Beach building. We know that all these other standards were approved by all the previous councils, previous planning commissions and zoning agreed. The existing rules, regulations did not appear out of thin air, neither did they come out of a smoke-filled room. They apply to everyone. What you're being asked to do is override those policies. Now, I don't think I need to remind you, you know, you guys are involved with all the committees and everybody else that works for the city, but these people are paid good money to study the situations and come up with rules, regulations, and directions. Now, I'm one of the Virginia Beach taxpayers, along with everybody here, who paid them for that reasoning and the product that they produced. They are there for every citizen to abide by when building and developing in the city. Everybody's supposed to be treated alike. There's also a major problem here that you cannot dodge, and that is, what they're asking you to do is create a precedent. 50-foot lots are in zoning, but we want 40-foot lots. They are going to tell you that it won't matter, because it's only one small project. However, the same Billy Almond I referred to earlier had did extensive work with one of the previous council members and determined there's something between 20 and 40 other properties at the north end with the same condition. Meaning, if you create a precedent, they, that is going to be it, from the standpoint of everybody else showing up to do the same thing. Now, I don't think that's going to be good for the city, and I don't think it's something you want to dump on the BZA, because they're going to be stuck with it as well. Doing it results in shredding the rules, with the only benefit being perhaps the developer, in this particular case, who might be able to make a few, few extra dollars. However, the financial well-being of builders is not a concern of the, of the city council or the concern of this, in this venue. The request is wrong. Approving it provides zero benefit to the city. It will set a precedent that you and the BZA will have to deal with. It essentially denies the values of the civic duty performed by me and the other bunch on the civic review, citizens review committee down there. So I seek your agreement tonight. One, we do not need or want such a precedent. Two, the existing rules, regulations prepared by city-paid employees cannot and should not be ignored. Three, we need as much public parking as we can get. I didn't mention earlier, but a 40-foot lot will give you one parking space. A 50-foot lot provides two. We've already had an experience with Ted on your side showing up to talk, the north end, how bad we were about people wanting to have a parking spot. And I can tell you, I day-tripped for a long time before I moved there. And the Civic League is in favor of public parking. Four, the city has no obligation to provide a fatter bottom line for anyone. Five, the residents of the north end have a right to ensure the residential character of our neighborhood. With your agreement, matters like this, matters that waste your time and that of the private citizens, that's me, involved will decrease in the future. I want to thank you for your consideration, and I hope you agree with some of the points that I've made. And I would like to agree with the gentleman who spoke ahead of me, Eddie, and I go back a long way, when he said, no variances are necessary. No variances are necessary. Developer can develop this project and make a dang-on good living doing it, and you don't need to violate the city zoning restrictions and rules that are in place to make that somehow better for him. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to try.
Any questions? Okay, thanks a bunch, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Morton Whitlow, and then after that, it'd be Barbara Messner.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Manager, City Attorney, Madam Clerk, good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to be here. My name is Mo Whitlow. I live at 10773rd Street. I've owned that property for about 25 years. I am not here on behalf of the owner of the 111. I'm not here on behalf of the developer. I'm not here on behalf of the builder. I'm here on behalf of the neighbors that live on 73rd Street. Here's the deal. I understand the Civic League doesn't want a large lot cut into two small lots. I'm okay with that, I support that, and you can support that. But that's not what we have here. What we have is two lots on 73rd Street, a 50-foot lot and a 30-foot lot. Well, they're proposing two single-family homes, and ours is a single-family block. And so we support two single-family homes. And if you turn this down, you have to think about what is the alternative? The developer can then go in and on the 50-foot lot, build one of those huge three-story, two-unit condos that even the Civic League doesn't want. We don't want it. And then, they can go in the 30-foot lot and also build two units. Now, you might say, how can they do that on a 30-foot lot? All they have to do is meet the setbacks, and they can do it. I asked the planning staff, could they do it? Yep, they can do it. So if we don't allow these owners and builders and developers to develop these two single-family homes, we're looking at the possibility of four units. We don't want four units. The Civic League doesn't want four units. I hope you don't want four units. We want two single-family homes. Ours is a single-family block. We want to keep it that way. You know, it's interesting, over the last 25 years, nine of us have faced the same dilemma, you know, do you, you get the house and it's an old cottage, and, you know, do you tear it down and build two units, or what do you do? Well, two people have torn down their houses, but they built about single-family units. Seven of us just remodeled the old cottages we had. And so what we have is a single-family street, and that's what we want to keep. You know, it's interesting, the opposition here by the Civic League and the folks that are adamantly opposed to this, they don't live on 73rd Street. So if you turn this down, developer builds four units, so what? Doesn't bother them. But it bothers us, it's our street. We don't want those four units, three units. We want two single-family homes. About a precedent, Mr. Warrant, who I deeply respect, he, I've tried to find another situation like this. Nobody knows of one.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Point of privilege, I want to take the time to thank all of you for your service here on city council. In a city some distance removed, many decades ago, I was lucky enough to serve a couple of terms on city council, so I know how much time it takes, how much energy it takes, how much work it takes, but I also know how rewarding it can be. So I hope you all enjoy, particularly the new members. Wish all the council the best of luck the rest of the city and the rest of your terms, and thank you very much for your service, I appreciate it.
And thank you for your point of privilege.
Mayor, the next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Okay. You know, going through all the planning, everything's approved, approved, approved. And this was deferred. We have a major problem with parking throughout the city. You know, different people from Civic Leagues at the north end, they come along and, you know, you, you have different parking for them than you do in the rest of the city. They get favors. You systematically remove parking for the entire city in the short-term rentals, which Ms. Henley and Lewis Jones, who's no longer here, and Moss, who's no longer here. You said you weren't going to keep approving them, and then you let people who don't have enough parking bypasses. That's discrimination. You can't sell passes, there isn't enough parking for us. The hotel industry, the brewery industry, plus, you're paying over $500,000 for these freebies? It's not free, we're paying for it, we. And, and they pick up drunks on the boardwalk, and then you have somebody else see them on the boardwalk.
Barbara, can we...
I'm talking about parking, and my name is Ms. Messner, when I'm in the formal meeting.
Yes, Ms. Messner.
Thank you.
Stick to the question.
Okay, and Billy, speaking of conflicts, Billy Almond has been appointed on the rack, when I went to the racks in the 80s or 90s, he's been on there that long, he's appointed by you. He has a conflict, he wins contracts with the city. And the setbacks, that's a burden on Public Works, it's a major problem for flooding, for the erosion. Our city is a mess, an absolute mess. You shouldn't approve anything, you shouldn't make these changes, because you don't take care of what you have. And, you know, some of these, you know, we had problems with another, you know, council member who used, you know, the seats to rock back and forth, they're not rocking chairs, it's very distracting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Messner.
Well, we're trying to pay attention.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burdon, would you like rebuttal time?
Yes, I would, thank you.
First of all, members of council, Mr. Warrant is a friend of mine, and I do respect him, he has gotten a little, few of the facts wrong. This were it an 80-foot lot, which it is absolutely not, we wouldn't be here. And there is not a chance in this world that there are 20-to-40, 30-foot lots at the north end of Virginia Beach. Lots of the north end of Virginia Beach, especially on the east side of Atlantic Avenue, but even on the west, but the east side of Atlantic Avenue, they are valued, unimproved lots, at well over $1 million. If, if there were any 30, and I believe, I have a client, I've been doing this for a long, long time, if there were 30-foot lots out there, they would have been found a long time ago. They're not. There are no 20, there are no 40. This application has been deferred, because it was requested by Councilman Branch to find out from the city staff how many of these lots might exist out there. They don't. Okay, so that's just not accurate. These are two lots, there are two legally buildable lots. They will, there will be no BZA variances involved, there'll be no need, because the homes fit on those lots. If, I don't want to confuse anybody, but if we took out the middle boundary line and made it an 80-foot lot, these two houses would require three variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. They require setback variances on the side. They would require a variance because the two houses are side by side instead of front to back. And they would require variances because they have two-car front-loading garages. Doing it this way requires no variances whatsoever, none. It's as simple as that. The, I've been, I've been doing this for a long, long time, and I respect the north end, believe, I've been dealing with the North End Civic League and they with me for well over 30 years, and, and the current committee for the last 20 years has done an excellent job. And, and it's, having worked through this and knowing that they don't like duplexes, and Mr. Large, same way, said, you know, when he bought this property and Ms. Athol said, would you please build single-family homes, he's not required to. He said, I'll make every effort to do that. And that's what he's done. And I've never come before this body representing a client in 40 years, asking for something that the client will actually make less money than if he developed three lot, three homes, which he would do, he wouldn't build a second duplex, somebody else might, but he, he will make less money. The duplexes, the units, and a single-family on the 30-foot lot have already been appraised at 4.7 million plus. Two single families are 4.4, 2.2 each.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon.
That's a fact. Okay, so we're, no one's here to try to make more money, and that's a first for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have to answer any questions, any...
Yep, I'd like to have, yes. So, Mr. Burdon, it may not be some 30 or 40 or 50-foot lots in the north end, but is there a count of how many lots are 60, 70, 80, 90, 100 feet in width in the north end?
There are very few. I would suggest that my, my guess would be, it would be somewhere in the range of 30 to 45, that would be my guess, and most of those are from Mr. Linsley closing portions of Holly Road back in the 70s over adjacent to what is now First Landing State Park. There are very, very few conforming lots at the north end for duplexes. The overwhelming majority are 50-foot wide, and they vary in depth from 100 feet to 100 and, I think, 65 in one or two blocks. Most of them are in 125, 135-foot depth.
But there could be some other single-family lots in the north end that could be 60, 80, 100 feet, that could be torn down and therefore made into 40-foot, less than 50-foot in width.
The, it would take to be this situation... The, it would take, to be this situation, there would have to be a 30-foot lot and a 50-foot lot. Because, let me, let me try to help a little bit. Section 4.4B of the subdivision ordinance permits the planning director, if you have two non-conforming lots, like exist here, to approve a re-subdivision of those lots that makes the situation less non-conforming. I've got a handout with all kinds of information that shows that's exactly what this is, and it's been done afore without requiring a variance. And that's what has happened in the past, because it reduces the density and it makes the end result a far better result. And the, Mr. Frankfield, Bob Scott, they've done this before at the North End and elsewhere, and those have all been exhausted, and there weren't very many to begin with. Okay? And if you read through the standards for a variance, we meet those standards. So it isn't a, it's not a recurring situation, and they're really, if it is recurring, if it is recurring, it's a positive precedent, because you're reducing density and you're keeping the development inconsistent with the development of the neighborhood. And so I don't, again, I'm, the client, this isn't about making more money. The client's going to make money either way, and probably make more if this is denied. But he's trying to do what's right, because that's what he's, Brian rarely ever comes down here and seeks a variance for anything. Okay? And the, but the notion that Mr. Warren is suggesting that this is going to open the door to a negative precedent is not supported by the reality on the ground at all, and that it's going to somehow create work for the BZA is also not accurate at all. And in fact, taking that lot line out and creating one 80-foot lot would be a self-imposed hardship for which we would have to go to the BZA and seek variances, which they can deny, because we will have created our own hardship. Because once it's one lot, there are 10-foot setbacks on the outside, and on the overlay, we're supposed to be building front to back, and we're not supposed to have a, we're supposed to have a side-loading garage, which you can't fit on two houses side by side on an 80-foot lot. So, believe me, we have looked at this from every which way. And if I had a solution, or if there was a better solution, we wouldn't be here. But this is the best solution, in my opinion, and in your staff's and your planning commission's opinion, but, you know, it's up to you all.
Okay. Thanks a bunch.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
No, I have a motion to deny the application.
Oh, it is denied?
Yes.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, the vote is open.
What does a mover mean? Mark? This is.
Okay, the motion has carried. A motion for denial. Okay, then moving on, I get number nine. Bird Neck Ocean Annex LLC Pitchslides Land Trust for a conditional use-per-net rate mini warehouse at 1069 Laskin Road. RJ?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. To the new members of council, congratulations on your new seat. I believe I've had the chance to meet many of you, and so I look forward to that. Although I should tell you that I've retired, so I don't plan to be here many more times, except on a rare occasion when I'm trying to wrap things up.
Your retirement is denied.
Well, my wife wants to overrule this. All right. But thank you very much. Those are kind words. Anyway, I'm here and representing this applicant, who is actually longtime friends of mine. They've developed mini storage at several locations throughout the city, all with rave reviews of their design and the results on the adjacent neighborhoods. This is a property that's Zone B2, unconditional. It's down on Laskin Road. It is near the new 7-Eleven, the council approved several years ago. It's a difficult lot in that it's long and narrow, and it makes it difficult to develop from that purpose alone. Retail has tried, residence, excuse me, restaurants have tried. As you know, the old Poston Ponny Restaurant used to be based here. It lasted a pretty good while. It then moved to Great Neck, and the owner's retired about a year ago, as a matter of fact. So this site has been used as a lay-down area for construction and so forth. It's unique also in that it's got B2, if you're looking at, I don't see an exhibit anymore. So if, anyway, it's got B2 on both sides of it. For the rear of the property is some property that was zoned residential years and years ago for condominium project. In fact, it was zoned at the time, way prior to 2005, when the city and the Navy struck a deal to prohibit housing in these areas. So you couldn't build that today. As a result, you can't put residential on this property today. It's located in a crash zone. It's located in the high-noise zone, and it's about 150 yards from where the jet went down on a fateful day, Easter, a few years ago. All of this means that the development of this property, given its size, its length, its prior usage, makes it a little bit more difficult than others. So my clients proposed mini storage on the property, and they came in and they met with staff, and staff had several recommendations to move the property further toward the road, which we did. They asked us to go to the Resort Area Advisory Commission, PDRC Committee, which oversees many issues down that area. We went to them, and they recommended approval. In fact, they recommended one addition, which we moved the awnings around on the first floor, which they thought was a good idea, and so did my clients. So we then went into a series of outreach, which we do on most applications, and met with the owners of the adjacent properties. The property in the rear had no objection. We then met, actually, my clients met, on two separate occasions with the owners of the Coquina condominium project next door, and showed them the plans. In fact, they asked them to meet them at the other project they have just down the street that they developed previously, right behind the Beach Pub. And they showed them that location, they showed them the landscaping, they showed them what the architecture would look like. And I'm happy to say that two of those members then wrote letters in support, one of which was the head of the HOA for that condominium. Most recently, we got a call from staff about a third member who was concerned about it, and we met to meet with her, as late as this morning, I might point out. And she wrote a letter today to you all, which I think your staff has passed out to you, indicating that she is in favor of the application. That was Ms. Deborah Muir and her husband. And she lives back in the back where these are located as well. We do have one person here in, well, in addition, Ms. Messner, we do have one person here in opposition as well. We've tried to work with that individual as well. In fact, at her request, we recessed the third level of the building. Even though it was under the height limit, we recessed it, they agreed to recess it. So it's further back from all the units along that side of the property. So the other nice things about this application is that, one, self-storage has amongst the lowest traffic generation around. So if you're worried about traffic coming to this site, it's going to be the lowest generator you can think of, except for what I used to call Mr. Jones' exception for cemeteries. The second benefit to this is there's no parking in the rear on the sides of this property. In fact, there's no drive-aisles on either side. The only vehicle activity that will occur will be in the first 75 foot of this property. That's it. It won't even come near to where the residences are. So, yes, it's, it's, it's under the height limit. We've recessed it. So we've complied with all your ordinances, we're going to meet or exceed your setback requirements. No variances are required. And I hope you try, know that we've tried to reach out to everybody. I'm sorry we couldn't reach this one lady with something that would reach her approval, but other than that, we're happy to say we have reached the approval of most people in that condominium association. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All my pleasure.
You can retire to your seat.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, the next speaker is Joanne Fridenson, and after that, it'll be Barbara Messner.
Good evening. Thanks for hanging in there.
Good evening. I'm a newbie here, so bear with me. Stay up. But wish I had time to address some of the inconsistencies that I just heard, but I probably I'm here to express my most fervent opposition to a mini warehouse proposed to be built, this is the lesser of the evils building, to be built 15 feet from my property fence. This would not only affect the value of my home, but it would significantly affect the enjoyment of Coquina condominiums, which were designed for light, and this would totally eclipse that. I never imagined a three-story warehouse would be built within every square inch of a lot. I believe it's non-conforming. It could, how could any of us have known that a huge self-storage warehouse would be built that would not improve the aesthetic nor the desirability of being on Laskin Road? I don't believe it is consistent with your plans for this area. It is located within the resort strategic growth area along the Laskin Road gateway. This is where revitalization efforts are meant to transform it as a major activity center. It does none of that. It is not in keeping with the new higher-end businesses. It creates minimal amount of jobs. It most certainly does not strengthen surrounding neighborhoods. At least three people are threatening to move. This will decrease values, which is the antithesis of your proposed vision. I appreciate not having the artificial light pollution from the windows, but not having a road behind us is actually, actually works against us. If there were a road, the build, if there was a road, the building wouldn't be so close. Most buildings have roads, parking, walkways, planned landscape buffers. Would take years to make any difference. So please see the picture so that you can see the actual reality of the setback. Bluntly, we would take noise and some traffic any day to living next to a wall. This type of building is entirely too close. This is Virginia Beach, not DC. I don't expect buildings and residences to be on top of each other. Such density is not necessary here. There's plenty of land and plenty of uses for that space. I believe it's been empty more due to price than lack of useful purpose. I'm a Realtor. Buyers are turned off by dark houses and obstructed views. It affects the desirability of a unit, and if it affects the comps, it'll affect the comps for everyone. No project validates a homeowner losing the value of their home.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my gosh.
Appreciate it.
Oh, can I just, I'm sorry, can I just say one, one thing? I just wanted to say that I could compromise if the city would just insist on a larger setback of 25 feet from our fence.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, the next speaker is Barbara Messner, and then after that, we have one WebEx
Good evening. This area over there, Woodbury, Bird Neck, it's highly congested. There's no parking anywhere. And there's already a mini warehouse in front of the restaurants and the pizza places on Laskin. And I've sent y'all pictures. I'm trying to think who was here at the time. Dyer, Wilson, and Henley have all seen the pictures, because I've been fighting the flooding on Laskin Road for, for probably decades. But these mini warehouses, it's also double-dipping, because they take advantage of a lot of the military and people that are, you know, have to put their belongings in there, and then they auction them off if people can't pay for it. So I'm opposed to these, all the warehouses, they're all over the place. 1069 Laskin Road. You just had the major, you already said you approved the 7-Eleven. You shouldn't approve that giant 7-Eleven on that corner. You can't keep up with all this stuff. There's problems with theft, fires, traffic, flooding, contaminated water sewer and water pipes. Some of these go back to Norfolk from the 20s and 30s. You've ignored the infrastructure. Yeah, our Public Works people, and you keep hiring people, there's only one paving, Virginia paving, and they can't keep paving over and patching everything. This place is a mess. Air trash pickup, who's going to pick up the trash for all these places? We already delayed, some of their trucks are, you know, falling apart. You can't find workers. Yeah, this is across from the Heritage Store and by the movie theater. Like I said, I have pictures of flooding and, you know, and it affects everyone. You don't have, you don't have these attorneys go around talking to a few neighbors. People work, they travel, they go to the oceanfront. You know, and, you know, it affects everyone. It's not just the people that live there. It's our city. So I'm opposed in... Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Daly. Ms. Daly, you're unmuted, and you can begin speaking.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Deborah Daly. I live at, I own a home on Coquina Chase that'll be directly affected by this three-story building. I purchased my unit around 1991, and one of the things that I liked about it, just besides the location, was the openness in the back. We could see all the way across the parking lot, plus there was a lot of trees. And at the time we purchased it, there used to be a nightclub there. And then later on, there was, like the other guy said, there was two, a few restaurants. And never had any problem, the back of the lot was rarely used, the parking lot. Now, having all that openness all that time, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to feel like, it's going to feel oppressive with that three-story wall there and have, after having the openness for so long. And my yard at the end of the street is only nine feet deep, and to be sitting out there and see this 30 to 35-foot wall overlooking me is a horrible prospect for me. I feel, I feel like I'm living behind a prison wall, and I don't want to live that way. Also, as the other speaker said, it's going to block the natural light that we get in our back windows, and you get a lot of sun, and then you get to see the sunsets in the evening. It's really nice. And all that'll be taken away if this building is built, and it'll be very dreary to live there, because the light's gone, and our units will be dark, and we'll have to have the lights on half the day. I sent you, the board, the city council, a couple emails with pictures of a new storage unit here that I live around here in Florida, and it's a three-story climate-controlled, and it also has outdoor one-story units. And when I was taking, I hope you saw the pictures. When I was standing by that wall, taking the picture with the little tree in front of it, I thought, I really wouldn't like to have this be in the shadow, living in the shadow of this wall, and only being 15 feet away from our property line. It's going to be oppressive, and I know you wouldn't want a wall like that behind your home. And I also sent you a couple pictures that show the back of the three-story unit with the one stories next to it, and the difference in size. That's, to me, that's significant. There's like the 20 to 25-feet difference in the size of those two buildings. And, and of course, once that's built, it's going to be harder to sell our units than lowering the value and the overall average in the community. And I think this lot is more conducive to a one-story building, because that's what's always been there. It's surrounded by 13 units on Coquina Chase, that wall, 13 units will be facing it, plus the back is residential, it's the apartments, and then the other side, there's a couple houses. And so I think because it's a lot of residential around it, it should remain a, a one, a lot that can only have a one-story building. And even though that building will probably And even though that building will probably look great as you're driving down Laskin Road, when you're having to live behind that wall, it's not going to be so great. And it's going to be kind of depressing, I think, to be there. So, thank you for listening, and I hope you will vote no on this. And what the other gentleman said that...
Thank you very much. Okay, is that the speakers?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Nutter, would you like to come back for rebuttal?
Thank you very much. Well, a couple of things I'd like to say is that, part of the problem is that even if you put residential next to there, there could be three-story in heights, would block the views, just like they would anywhere else. The heights of this structure is actually under what the heights could be. We've put in extra landscaping, and we've recessed the third floor, like we did recently on another project that was approved by council just a few months ago. So, and also, I'd like to address the question of impact on adjacent other neighbors. I don't live next to one, a self-storage facility, but I do have letters here from two neighborhoods that do live directly adjacent to the three-story structures they built adjacent to their residential neighborhoods. Both neighborhoods supported what they did and said what a benefit it's been to their residential area. The first is from Tom Burroughs' wife, who lives in the condominiums directly next to the Beach Pub, where it's blocked at that one. The next one, excuse me, is from, let me get the, Michael Burnett, from David Hicks, who's head of the Prince and Square Condominium Association. In fact, he goes on in his letter, and I'll pass these out to you. He goes on in his letter to say that there was a previous use of the property next door for a automobile repair facility. And the neighborhood opposed that. And when this application came in, they realized how quickly their neighborhood was constrained by a permitted use in the B2 district that would not require any approvals. Three stories, two story, or one story, with a lot of noise. So, and he goes on to say, be careful what you wish for. So, he said, Mr. Burnett is a man of his word, and he'd been very open and consistent with complying with the things we have. Remember, if a property's owned commercial, just about anything can be built on that property. So choose your battles wisely. So this is a great use for this property. It's consistent with your comp plan. Your staff has recommended approval. Your planning commission has recommended approval. And people who live right next door, on two other occasions, have talked about how good these use facilities can be. So, Terry, if you don't mind, I'll leave this with you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
So, I'd like to first speak to the residents who I've spoken with, Mrs. Friedenson, and some other residents who live adjacent to this proposed development. I understand where you're coming from. I've visited you all on site. I've talked to you, with you several times about this. I think the applicant has done a very good job in developing a plan for this. The landscaping, the height of the building, the setback on the property, the height, and the overall design. So, I move for approval of the application.
Second.
We have an approval in a second. Any other discussion? Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the application.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, do we have some appointments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. To the Active Transportation Advisor Committee, we're going to appoint Councilmember, Council Lady Rouse and Robin Kelly to the Deferred Compensation Board. We're going to appoint Councilmember Holcomb and Monica Copan to the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee. Recommend Robert Smith, Mark Gamel, Lauren Heckelman, Robert Herbert, Philip Olson, Kathleen Owens, excuse me, Fenton Priest, and Joseph Strange. To the Oceanian Land Use Conformity Committee, we recommend Scott Cutchin and Captain Stephen Gignaldi. To the Personnel Board, we recommend a reappointment, Sharon Brown, Daniel DeRoche, Ed Jones, and Kenneth Snyder as an alternate. To the Resort Advisory Commission, we recommend Clifford Messman. To the Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force, we recommend Captain Colin Elliott from the Police Department. To the Wetlands Board, we recommend David Bradley. And then for some special liaisons, Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach, Councilman Michael Belucci. To the Virginia Beach Moca, Councilmembers Belucci and Remick. To the Advertising Committee, Council Lady Dr. Millie Ross Hammond.
Hey. Any questions, votes open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, any old business? Any new business? Thank you all very much.
Yes, I do have new business.
Yes.
Actually, I wanted to follow up on a resolution to honor not just Councilmember Aaron Rouse, who's now Senator Rouse, but I also submitted a resolution to honor several other council members that passed. Now, from my understanding and recollection, the body, without my consent, wanted to move that resolution to honor those members to today. But when I looked at the agenda, I didn't see it. So, I don't know what happened, but it was supposed to be on the agenda for today. Does anyone know what happened?
There was a lot of different discussions last week about this, and one of them was for us to discuss it at the retreat next week.
Oh. Did someone call? I didn't get that call. And what I'm going to say...
It wasn't a private call, it was a discussion at the table.
Well, I was in, the discussion we had January 3rd, it wasn't there. I didn't hear that. And this is really an issue of protocol. As a council member, this is a council meeting. And so, this is where council members get business done, not just for the people, but they have to get business done. And so, as a council member, if I'm requesting something and never told that it was taken off the agenda or moved, or, that's just not courtesy. I wouldn't do that to any of my colleagues here. And I don't expect that from anyone here. I don't know what happened to the request, but I'm going to read it tonight. So, I'm going to read this resolution to honor Senator Aaron Rouse. I don't have the other resolutions, because I wasn't privy to that. But I'm going to read it into the record tonight. Hopefully, he's watching. So, the resolution reads, whereas...
Excuse me, Ms.?
No, according to the Charter, Section 2-33, Number 7, council members can read presentations during new business. You asked if there was new business? This is new business, please. Whereas Aaron Rouse graduated from First Colonial High School, earned a bachelor's degree in sociology from Virginia Tech, and whereas Aaron was drafted by the Green Bay Packers in 2017 in the NFL Draft, and also played for the New York Giants and Arizona Cardinals. And whereas, after retiring from the National Football League, Aaron returned home to Virginia Beach to begin his career in public service. He served as a coach and a mentor before founding Rouse's House, a nonprofit organization that serves to establish education as the foundation for today's youth with a primary goal of exposing youth in the community to a broader world of learning. And whereas, on November 6, 2018, Aaron was elected to the Virginia Beach City Council as an at-large member. Now, Aaron is Senator-elect for the 7th District. And whereas, Aaron's community involvement and recognition includes Chair, Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads, Changemaker of the Year Award, Volunteer Hampton Roads, Class of 2021, Civic Leadership Institute Hampton Roads, Virginia Tech Athlete of the Year 2021, Martin Luther King Jr. Service Award, Morning Star Baptist Church 2020, African-American Creativity or Creative Community Series Distinguished Lifetime Achievement Award, 2020 African-American Excellence in Service Award, AKA Sorority Incorporated, and History Maker Award, Virginia Beach NAACP 2019. Whereas Aaron serves, or served, as City Council Liaison to the Minority Business Council, Something in the Water, Atlantic Park Community Development Authority, Beaches and Waterways Advisory, and the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia Beach City Council hereby congratulates and offers sincere appreciation for Senator Aaron Rouse for his many achievements, and honor a public servant who deserves our deepest gratitude and respect for all that he has done for the City of Virginia Beach and its citizens. Now, it's important, prior to this, I was accused of being political in reading this and honoring this gentleman before the election that occurred on November 3rd. Well, he won, and is now Senator, became Senator of District 7. And that item disappears on the agenda. Now, I ask you, that's political. So, I wanted to read this into the record. Congratulations, Senator Rouse. I salute you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else where adjourned? Thank you.